...to order and call your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. If you now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) (inaudible)
Rule call, please.
Granquist.
Here.
Arnz.
Here.
Webb.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Murin.
Here.
Snorton.
Clausen.
Here.
Hildebrand.
Here.
Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I would like to move item number fifteen from the consent agenda to our regular agenda, and I will also be abstaining from the consent agenda vote.
Thank you, Councilman. If no other amendments or changes, I would look for a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote. Has everybody voted?
Voting in the affirmative, McCarthy, Granquist, Arnz, Webb, Clausen, Murin abstaining, Hildebrand, motion carries.
Okay, I would then look for a motion to approve the full agenda.
And I would note, we had a request from the applicant to remove item number thirty-two, which is Resolution twenty-two-four-eighteen approving a preliminary plan development on property addressed as one-oh-five East Norfolk Avenue. So I'd look for a motion to approve the full agenda with that amendment.
I'll make a motion to approve the full agenda with that amendment.
Second.
Okay, motion second, if no discussion, please vote.
All council members present.
Voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
That takes us first to our special presentations, and with the amended agenda, we'll start with number fifteen when we get there. But first, the special presentations for this evening include a proclamation for April twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four as Arbor Day. And I will read the proclamation, it reads as such, "Whereas in eighteen-seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife, and trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, countless other wood products, and trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees wherever they are planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, now therefore I, Josh Mooney, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, do hereby proclaim April twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four to be Arbor Day in the City of Norfolk, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations." Is there anyone here tonight to receive the Arbor Day proclamation? Nate Powell, our Parks and Director.
Speech? Yeah. We are excited about the dior grant, I just wanted to bring that up since we were awarded a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars with from the dior grant, and that will go towards trees over the next, planting trees over the next four years, and planting hopefully up to seven hundred trees in our parks and otherwise, so be good.
The Loyalty Day proclamation reads as such, "Whereas Loyalty Day is a special occasion to reaffirm our allegiance to the United States of America and to honor the principles of freedom, democracy, and equality that our nation stands for, and whereas the citizens of Norfolk have always demonstrated unwavering dedication and loyalty to our country, contributing to its prosperity and well-being, and the City of Norfolk recognizes the sacrifices made by our military service members, veterans, and their families in defending our freedoms and preserving our way of life, and on this day, we celebrate the spirit of unity and patriotism that binds us together as a community and as a nation, and whereas we commend the efforts of organizations and individuals who promote civic engagement, education, and awareness about the importance of loyalty and citizenship, now therefore I, Josh Mooney, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, along with the Norfolk City Council, hereby proclaim May first, two thousand twenty-four as Loyalty Day in Norfolk, I urge all residents to reflect on the values of loyalty, liberty, and justice that define our nation, and to honor the achievements and sacrifices of those who have contributed to its greatness." Is there anyone here tonight to receive the Loyalty Day proclamation? A group, thank you.
May I, do you want to make any announcements or further commentary on Flag Day?
Well, along with, thank you for proclaiming it as Loyalty Day on May first, and I just want to invite everybody in the community to our celebration on May first at the VFW. We are going to have a special Flag Day ceremony, a lot of things for the kids, and educational things, and free food, and goodwill donation, but we're gonna have a good time, and to make it more, we used to do the parade in the past, but instead of the parade, that's still a confusion, instead of the parade, we're going to have the celebrations between five o'clock and seven thirty.
So you've done a lot of work to kind of change the recognition of this day, in the first year of doing so, and I know a lot of effort went into that, so thank you very much.
And there will be, the video is done, and so that will be on different sites of chamber, possibly the city, and go out there, and so we can see the history of Loyalty Day, how it got started, so we're excited about that.
All right, thank you. So I'll let you guys hold up here.
We have some people kind of just going this side.
Yes.
Three, two, one.
Someone's missing the picture.
Three, two. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Update Presentation. Here with us is Brittany.
Well, Mayor, Council, thank you for having us here this evening.
Evening.
My name is Brittany Kanek, and I am a retail account manager for the City of Norfolk, as well as several of the larger commercial and industrial customers around town. The area I cover starts at Hardington, it goes all the way to Ainsworth, so cover a nice vast area, and we come out once a year to give an update. We talk about how we do as a company, and then also specifically for your community. So we like to think of everyone as an energy partner, we like to be your partner in energy. In retail, we focus on the three Rs, that's rate, stability, reliability, and relationships. So part of that relationship is why I'm here this evening, it's why we have a dedicated crew in town, it's why I have some support with me this evening. We have our general manager of retail, we have our vice president and chief information officer, and we have a wholesale account manager, in addition to a public power partner from Elkhorn with us this evening, so nice to see all them out here and support. As you know, Norfolk owns its own distribution system. We lease it from you, we run your system, basically, we keep, make sure that the poles are safe and all the things that we have to do. For that privilege, we pay you a lease payment, we collect and remit that money to you every month. In two thousand twenty-three, four million, six hundred forty-seven thousand dollars, five hundred, actually, five hundred ninety-eight dollars and thirty-one cents were remitted to the City of Norfolk. That goes to your general fund, then you guys spend it as you see fit. In addition, three hundred eighty-one thousand, eight hundred ninety-eight dollars and fifty-three cents collected and remitted in city sales tax. Also, state statute says anything we collect for revenue inside of corporate limits has to have a gross revenue tax, and that goes directly to the county, the county then puts it back to taxing entities. One million, five hundred sixty-nine thousand, five hundred forty dollars and ten cents in gross revenue was paid to Madison County, and then the city does get some percentage of that, I don't know how much it is for sure. Some of the other things we help our communities do is become more efficient through LED lighting. In addition to that, the City of Norfolk chose to take a huge step this year and convert their M-two lights. There's street lighting, that's M-one, which is stuff that we put up, and then there's M-two lighting, stuff the city owns. You guys chose to take a big step to pay for LED lighting, as a result, you were able to get an energy efficiency incentive, just a touch more than twenty-nine thousand dollars that came back to you. In addition, those LED lights were high-pressure sodium, you will see a sixty-four percent savings in that, just on the rate alone, so that's a really good payback for you also, so congratulations on the efficiencies upgrade, I think you'll be very pleased with that. Energy efficiency is also something we offer to everyone, all of our customers, including the City of Norfolk. In two thousand twenty-three, one hundred ninety-five thousand, one hundred sixty-three dollars and ninety cents in incentives were paid to customers in Norfolk. Along with that, NPPD was recognized by the American Public Power Association as a smart energy provider. The Smart Energy Provider is a program that recognizes public power utilities demonstrating commitment to and accomplishment in smart energy planning, energy efficiency in distribution of energy resources, environmental and sustainability programs, and communication and customer experience. So we're very proud to have that designation, and to be able to tell you all about it so that you understand the steps we take to make sure that your customers and our customers get the very best that we can give. Norfolk is also one of our communities, has a community solar farm. I thought this year it might be nice to kind of let you know how it performs. In two thousand twenty-three, it produced eighteen million, two hundred forty-six thousand, five hundred five kilowatt-hours. Each month, all nine thousand, two hundred fifty-seven shares were fully subscribed. What that means is that the shares available were all spoken for, so even if you have a customer who moves out, there is someone on a list ready to go who gets those, so never once did the city have to assume any extra shares because the folks are taking them if we call and they need them, so that's a really good, a really good thing. The other great thing, the Norfolk Solar Farm is actually out-producing the developer projection by about point four-three percent, so it's about right dead-on, it's about as close as you can get to producing exactly what they thought it would, so that's a very good thing. Something that's very interesting, February in two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four are well above projection, it's interesting that February is, but that's the way it was, we'll see if it holds true for next year, I guess. We're also working to be a sustainable utility. One of our goals is to be carbon-free by two thousand fifty. Now, as you can see on the front, we are more than fifty-six percent carbon-free with a very diverse generation mix, if you look at the bottom and you can see the different We are looking into wind and solar resources, alternative fuels, which include hydrogen and biofuels, energy storage, carbon sequestration, and small modular nuclear reactors. Again, some of this stuff may be a little ways down the road, but we are looking into it for a sustainable future. If you turn to the back page, we'll get to the reliability section. Our grid provides industry-top quartile reliability performance, we're very, very proud of that. That means that when things do happen, or things don't happen, our system holds up. We also have, provide exceptional service during routine work or responding to emergent outage situations. As a matter of fact, in two thousand twenty-three, NPPD was given its third APPA, American Public Power Association, RP-three Diamond Level Designation. RP-three stands for Reliable Public Power Provider. We got our first one in two thousand seventeen, it's a three-year designation, so the second one in two thousand twenty, and then the third one in the fall of two thousand twenty-three. This designation is given over four key disciplines, reliability, safety, workforce development, and system improvement. There are over two thousand public power districts or public power utilities nationwide, two hundred seventy-one of them hold the RP-three designation. We are Diamond Level, but there's Diamond, Platinum, and Gold, with Diamond being the highest. NPPD is one of one hundred twenty-two utilities at that Diamond Level. Again, we say that not to boast about the fact, I mean, we're very proud of it, don't get me wrong, but again, this is something we do every day for our customers because we want to give you the absolute best, because it's what everyone deserves. Affordability is also something we like to hang our hat on. Two thousand twenty-four marks the eleventh consecutive year there has been no overall rate increase. Certain classes, yes, may have gone up, others may have gone down, overall, no overall increase. Last year, we had a little graph of the lowest rates in the U.S., which were a mixture of all of our rates together. This year, we're strictly sticking with our residential. Now, if you can see from the chart, the nation's average is fifteen point zero four cents per kilowatt-hour. If you look at Nebraska's, it drops to ten point seven-nine, which is a great accomplishment in and of itself. NPPD sits at ten point two-five cents per kilowatt-hour, again, something we're very proud of, giving our customers the best we can at a very affordable price. Our customers also are able to subscribe to, download, NPPD on-the-go, which is our app, also another part of that communication piece from the Smart Energy Provider. The, it will alert you, you can sign up for different alerts, outage notifications, if you happen to be out of town and you're not paying attention to anything going on up here, well, guess what, it'll tell you if your meter's out, if you have subscribed to that. It'll also give you updates if the estimated time of restoration changes. If you choose, it will tell you when you have a bill that's ready to be paid, it'll tell you when it's due, and yes, even past due, if you don't get it paid in time. So we are ready to assist in that way. You can make payment arrangements through the mobile app, it works very, very well, and we've noticed with outages, when people do report outages through the app, it just feeds those tickets through faster, our outage prediction software works more quickly, and we can isolate those outages even faster. So that is something also we're very, very happy to give our customers. I will not take up any more of your time, I know you've got a very full agenda, and we've got some weather moving in potentially, so we definitely want to be mindful of that. I don't know about all of you guys, but we are highly weather-driven, as I'm sure you know, so it might mean some of us don't get much sleep tonight, you never know, but I can tell you this, if something happens, you can bet we'll be out there when it's safe to do so, and we'll take care of anything we can. Do you guys have any questions? Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Brittany. We will begin our regular agenda with item fifteen, which was removed from consent and added to the full agenda. So I will look for a motion to consider approval of a limited English proficiency plan for the City of Norfolk as it related to the needs of individuals with limited English language skills.
I'll offer consideration of the approval of limited English proficiency plan.
Second. Motion and second, and to hear some background on this, first, we will hear from Jessica DeVorek, our city human resources director. Jessica.
All right, good evening, Mayor and council members. Again, my name is Jessica DeVorek, and I was recently hired for the city back in the February, back in February of two thousand twenty-four. So since my time in that position, I have been evaluating some different HR initiatives, and I discovered the need to review this limited English proficiency plan just for compliance purposes. The purpose of the LEP plan is to outline the City of Norfolk's efforts to comply with Title VI, the Civil Rights Acts of nineteen sixty-four, and the Executive Order one-three-one-six-six. So Title VI, what that does is prohibits discrimination based on race, color, national origin, it includes limitations on English proficiency. LEP individuals must be able to access city services regardless of any language barriers. Although the LEP population is small in Norfolk, Spanish, individuals who speak Spanish, that's the primary language spoken other than English of the smaller population. LEP needs are based on service type, frequency of contact, and importance to the LEP population. And at a high level, this plan that is attached, it just outlines how the city will identify LEP individuals through the data analysis, such as the census data, provides language assistance by providing interpreters and other telephone and software interpretation services. It also requires us to train staff on what Title VI is, LEP services, and handling LEP interactions. So this plan also, the last time it was updated was two thousand fifteen, so we're looking to have it be monitored more frequently, ensure that we're meeting the needs of constituents, and also to add an LEP policy statement that needs to be visible at all the city office locations so that individuals are aware of what their language options are. So at this time, we're just requesting your approval to publish this updated plan throughout the organization, also to ensure compliance is being met, so we continue these language assistance efforts going forward. Are there any questions at this time? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Any public discussion or input on this?
This is my first time coming in front of you all, so bear with me, please.
Good evening.
My name is Leonore Fier, I'm a resident of Norfolk, and I just wanted to speak a little bit about the Limited English Proficiency Plan. Although this plan doesn't directly impact me, it does impact my family, friends, and community members, fellow community members. And I want to start by saying thank you to Mrs. DeVorek for prioritizing looking at this plan, being so fresh to the city. I think it's something that impacts a lot more people than we realize. Looking at data, it's easy to look at the numbers in the census and see a small amount of people that are impacted by this, but in reality, we know that the census isn't always an accurate data analysis to utilize, and so there have been individuals in our community that have come forward to talk about and support the city in producing a more comprehensive English proficiency plan, and I just asked the city council at this time to table this plan so that we can provide more opportunities for community members to come forward and build something a little bit more comprehensive, and not necessarily just meet the minimum requirements for meeting the title, so that's all I ask. Thank you.
Leonore, can I ask you, have you been in discussion with Jessica about this?
I have, and I really appreciate that, I was able to connect with Jessica to talk about this and talk about some of the efforts of some of our community members that are most impacted by this, to work together and build something that really meets the needs of our limited English community members.
So a natural question for us up here, I think, is the need to get something updated right now versus having a more full, comprehensive set of recommendations that you're able to work on, so how would you react to that? You asked us to wait and table, obviously, but what does that process look like in terms of getting full input and renewing our plan?
Absolutely. I think there's already a robust active effort in our community to maximize resources for our limited English community members, and so if we need a timeline, I am probably aiming high here, but I think within two months' time, we could really present something much more comprehensive and robust for our community.
I see Jessica nodding her head. So I think that gives us affirmation to say, hey, give you guys some time to work together. Any questions or comments on that, Council?
No, I just think it's a good thing of hearing somebody coming forward that wants to help make something better, so I think we all appreciate that.
Very much so.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Any other public input or comments on this? Okay, Council, any further discussion?
I think at this moment, I'll make a motion to go ahead and table this. Second.
Yeah, we should probably postpone to a date specific, otherwise, if we don't bring it up at the next agenda, it will die, so if we want to shoot for...
Maybe, you got an idea? You got a thought?
And if we're not ready at that time, if we need to table it again, you know, that's fine, but we probably won't be ready in three weeks.
I was gonna propose Monday, June seventeenth, if that works for Leonore. It's about two months.
All right, I'll make a motion that we table this until Monday, June seventeenth of two thousand twenty-four.
Second that.
Okay, motion to table until June seventeenth of this year, and a second, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion is tabled.
Okay, that moves us to item twenty-four under the Public Hearings and Related Action section of the council agenda. I will open this public hearing to consider amending section six-eighteen and six-one-six-two of the official city code to allow an owner to restore a building or structure for which the cost of repairs equals or exceeds fifty percent of the market value of the structure if certain minimum code standards are met. And to give us some background on this, we'll hear first from Val Grimes, our city planner.
All right, thanks, I'll just kind of give a little history of this. The fifty percent code amendment, it was requested a few years ago to actually put language in our code to assist with cleanup of structures that had lived their lives and needed to be removed, but now with the lack of housing in particular, it's been requested there be additional language included in there, that there is now an option for those who would like to rehab a structure, that the work exceeds fifty percent of the value of the structure, and then it would be permitted to do that if they bring the structure up to code and within that timeframe indicated in the code language amendment proposed tonight. Just further clarification, this proposed allowance does not apply to any non-conforming structure that's fifty percent or more, deteriorated, damaged, that sort of thing, nor to the FEMA floodplain fifty percent substantial damage limit of those in the floodplain either. If there's any questions.
Val, for background, wasn't this fifty percent originally put in a place to help our enforcement officers on what was acceptable to, I guess, to rehab versus a complete judgment call, which is, which is hard to determine, on a judgment call versus actually having concrete enforcement on the fifty percent rule?
I would say yes, that is correct. It helps our enforcement officers kind of give a better number so that people weren't getting too far into a project, you know, that the enforcement officers see this on a daily basis and kind of understand what all goes into it, and the regular, average person doesn't necessarily do that, so yes, it... So yes, it was that fifty percent rule seemed reasonable and logical at the time, but like I said, now we have such a shortage that this has been requested to be added to that fifty percent.
And the timeframe is, what, a two-year timeframe?
Correct.
Is that the way it reads?
Yeah. So it would be within two years from either the date a building permit is issued for it, or the date the structure is posted as condemned or unfit for occupancy, so either a red or yellow tag at that point. That way, they don't just sit there forever with somebody saying, yep, we're going to get to it. That way, they, they have a timeframe in which to move that rehab along.
At the end of the two years, then, can you, can you reapply for a permit, or it has to be completed within the first, the first building permit of two years previously?
That is a good question, and we don't necessarily have that in here. I would hope that within those two years, it would pretty much be mostly done. Technically, your building permit, as long as you make progress on it and don't stop for sixty-six months, your building permit continues. This would be more of a, I suppose, at that point, if you were ninety-eight percent done at two years' time and you need two more months, of course, we're just, we're not going to tell you to tear it down at that point in time. But I guess that's up to you all, if you want something in there that if they're not done within two years, is that something that then gets brought to you all to see what you want to have done with it at that point in time?
Thank you.
Val, does this apply to someone gets halfway through a project and decides they do not want to continue the project and sell it? Does that start the process back over again, or how does that work?
Well, we never thought of that one, I think. Yeah. I'm not quite sure how we would handle that. I mean, as long as you have a commitment of that new person going through it, me as the buyer, I would be maybe a little leery of picking something up that was already so far gone past that fifty percent. Do you really want to pick that up and, and keep carrying it? I don't know.
I don't know that that can necessarily be addressed in here. The only change, the change being made, because the fifty percent rule already exists, right?
Correct.
So the addition is the provision of allowing for that fifty percent to be exceeded if the project can be made to meet existing codes, current codes.
Correct.
Which, I know there's been quite a bit of discussion on this, and this seemed to be kind of a compromise or a middle ground between scrapping the fifty percent rule altogether to give more flexibility in rehab versus still having, having some governor or ruler there in terms of how projects have to be done.
Right. I would agree with this. This is a compromise from, I don't know, three or four subcommittees, potentially something like that, yeah.
Well, I was the one who was pushing this, so. But yeah, I think it's important that we allow people to, you know, rehab homes, and with the shortage of houses we have right now, you can get into a house pretty easily and put a new AC unit in there, a new air conditioner, change out your HVAC, redo your plumbing, you're going to be right at that fifty percent before you know it, on a house that's been stripped down already, you know? So I think it's important we do that, because otherwise, we could, we could possibly be tearing down structures, and in my opinion, for affordable housing, you know, going into some of the places, redevelop or re, remodel some of these structures. I think that's a way you can address housing shortage and affordability. So I think this is very important to have this in our code.
And one more thing I think we talked about, too, is that fifty percent, you know, is that based on assessed value or is it based on market value, too? So sometimes I think those two values can, can really vary a lot, so this does give a little flexibility in, in those, those values, too. So I think it's a good plan.
Is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now?
Well, I wasn't going to speak about this, because I forgot this was on the agenda, but I was so excited when I saw it, I had to say something. My name is Russ Wilcox. I'm a realtor here in Norfolk. I work for my wife, who owns a brokerage here in Norfolk, Real Estate Solutions team, and I want to congratulate you on this. This has been a huge issue for really the, probably the last ten to fifteen years. It has really become an issue within the real estate world when we're dealing with folks that have a property that could be brought back online. It could get to a point where it had value, but unfortunately, the city enforcement folks, and really, we were kind of unfair to our city enforcement folks. I mean, I love to pick on my buddy Steve a ton, but, you know, like, Steve Nordius was in a spot a lot of times where he could look at something and say, there's probably a way we could fix this, there's probably a way we can get there, but the code says I can't let you. And I understand that you can put fifty or seventy-five thousand, and it's going to be worth this when it's done, but I'm sorry, it's just not allowed. So I think you, just putting flexibility into this is a great idea. And you talk about affordable housing, I mean, I think we've had a lot of houses that have been red-tagged over the years, that if this would have been in place, there's a chance that those could have been rehabilitated and turned into something more affordable. So I love what you're doing with that. I think you're on to something, though, with that. One of the things you might consider, because I think what you're suggesting does happen, you get into this process, somebody gets approval to move forward, and then they run out of money, and we see that all the time with these deals, you know, and so then it's half-done. Well, the problem is, because you can't live in it, it's half-done, you get, there's some issues with salvageability, you know, and can we go somewhere with it? I think if you could create something where you could extend the right to a new buyer, I think what that would allow is to get buyers to jump in that are flip-type people and see that a portion of the work was completed, and for maybe a small dollar amount or a smaller amount of effort from what it started at, we could do this. But I think if you hold them accountable, and I think that's where Val has really done a good job, as she said, you got to hold folks accountable. They'll take this and drag it out forever. But I think if you give them a chance and you hold them accountable, and the rules are this, and they're made, they're made very plain, and they understand what the rules are, and the worst thing that happens is you get one back, but if you can turn around and sell it to somebody else after half the work's been done with some sort of a short extension, I think we could get a lot of these houses back on track. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Russ, for that input. Anyone else wishing to make comment?
I'll make one more comment on this. So Val, that actually, that, wouldn't that fifty percent or equal or exceed fifty percent actually apply to each building permit? So wouldn't it go per applicant, not necessarily per structure?
Are you saying if somebody started one and didn't finish it?
A year later, they, they abandoned it. The new, the new buyer with their new application should start that two-year process again.
So the question is, it go to, does the permit go to the applicant or the property?
Does it run with the applicant, or does it run with the property?
I guess I was thinking it ran with the property, because you own a property, I mean, if I start something, get a year and a half into it, I abandon it, and then you buy it from me a year later, then you have another two years, you abandon it, I mean, will it ever finish?
I don't know if many people are going to have holding costs that are going to go two years.
The permit would be open until it's approved at the end of the process, when you get your occupancy, right? So the permit would automatically go with the property, I would think, because that's what it's, you know, it's basically saying this property needs to be inspected when complete, and if, if the one buyer didn't do it, the next buyer is going to do it. I suppose you just change the application name on the permit.
And the two years continues with...
Right. Yeah.
I guess kind of that's where I was getting at.
Because it would be open with our CO.
I'm not sure that changing ownership really affects the policy in this case.
Yeah, it's going to follow, it's following the project.
The policy, or the property.
Yeah, so I think the two years, if you start at January first of twenty-three, you have to have a CO January first of twenty-five for your two years, and if it changed hands over the course of three times, you still have that two years to, in which to get that done, right? Because you need the CO, yeah.
You need the CO to close your permits.
I guess that's where I was leading to, is that two-year term stays.
It's with the property, not the person, yeah. We worked through it.
There we are. Okay. All right. Anybody else wishing to make public comment? Okay. Seeing no one else, I will close the discussion, ask for Planning Commission report, please.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on April second, two thousand twenty-four to consider approval of an amendment to section six dash eighteen and six dash one sixty-two of the official city code to allow an owner to restore a building or structure for which the cost of repairs equals or exceeds fifty percent of the market value of the structure if certain minimum condition code standards are met. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the amendment with an eight to zero vote.
Thank you. With that, I will close the hearing and move to item twenty-five. I'd look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-eight seventy-four approving an amendment to section six dash eighteen and six dash one sixty-two of the official city code to allow an owner to restore a building or structure for which the cost of repairs equals or exceeds fifty percent of the market value of the structure if certain minimum code standards are met.
I will offer for consideration ordinance number fifty-eight seventy-four.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion, council? Councilman Clausen, I think your comments are spot-on, as someone who rehabbed a hundred and forty-year-old house. If this code had been in existence then, I never would have been able to take on that project. So this does allow some flexibility for rehabbing houses that are salvageable and putting them back on the market, so. Any other discussion or commentary before we vote? Short title, then, please.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend section six dash eighteen and six dash one sixty-two of the official city code to allow an owner to restore a building or structure for which the cost of repairs equals or exceeds fifty percent of the market value of the structure if certain minimum code standards are met. To provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide with the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
McCarthy, Granquist, Arns, Webb, Clausen, Muren, voting in opposition. Hildebrand, ordinance number fifty-eight seventy-four carries on first reading.
I guess I would ask that, is there any urgency in putting this in at this point in time, or going through the two- and three-step process?
I don't know of any.
Okay. Okay. All right. That being the case, then we will move on to item twenty-six. I will open the public hearing to consider amending section twenty-three dash one of the official city code to include definitions related to condominiums to enact chapter twenty-three, article two, division three of the official city code to address condominium plats. And once again, Val, if you could open with some background on this, please.
All right. Thank you. Yes, so little history on condos in our code. We currently don't have anything that mentions condos, which is why the amendment proposed tonight actually puts definitions in, and also a section speaking as to what would be required for a condominium plat, including but not limited to like scales, dimensions, what are the common areas, what are the actual units. This is similar to what we already have in code for like a regular preliminary and final plats, but specifically for condos. This is an easier way for those putting together the condo plat than going through the many sections of state statute. There's probably ninety sections of state statute now, if you really want to read it, have at it, but that's what I did to try to put this together. And so this code contemplates that commission and council would only approve the condo plat, and the condo declaration would actually be submitted to us with the plat, but the declaration would not be approved with the city because the declaration is more of, how's the HOA going to function, their board, and that sort of thing. But state statute says that to actually make a condo regime, you have to have both. But I thought, we're kind of here to split up the land, make something sellable in units, but probably not get into how they actually run their regime and their board, if you have any comments on that.
Thank you, Val. Any questions right now?
Essentially, with the condo, you can, you can recognize property lines running basically any direction, right? Is that the main difference between that and a townhouse type subdivision?
Yeah, because townhouses still have that minimum lot size that goes with the unit, whereas a condo, you don't necessarily get the extra land with it, and you can go vertical with it also, yeah.
This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now? Okay. Seeing hearing no one, Planning Commission report, please.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on April second, two thousand twenty-four to include definitions related to condominiums to enact chapter twenty-three, article two, division three of the official city code. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the amendment with an eight to zero vote.
Okay. With that, I will close the hearing and move to item twenty-seven. Would entertain a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-eight seventy-five approving an amendment to section twenty-three dash one of the official city code to include definitions related to condominiums to enact twenty-three, chapter twenty-three, article two, division three of the official city code to address condominium plats.
I will offer for consideration ordinance number fifty-eight seventy-five approving an amendment to section twenty-three dash one.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion on this, council? I think things are related here in terms of efforts to hopefully open up more housing options and opportunities in the community. If no further discussion, short title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend section twenty-three dash one of the official city code to include definitions related to condominiums, to enact chapter twenty-three, article two, division three of the official city code to address condominium plats, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide with the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number fifty-eight seventy-five carries on first reading.
Seeing no opposition, I'd like to suspend the rules of the second, third reading.
Second.
Motion second to suspend the rules and approve on second, third readings. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number fifty-eight seventy-five carries on second and third.
All right. Item twenty-eight. I will open this public hearing at the request of Liberty Center Services Incorporated to consider zoning change from R two, one and two-family residential district to R three, multiple-family residential district on property addressed as two oh five South Chestnut Street. And Val, once more, some background on this, please.
All right. Thank you. So this is a piece of property that is currently vacant, owned by the Liberty Center, just south of where they have their apartment buildings currently, and for some reason, it's R two-zoned. Everything else that they own is R three-zoned, and there is an applicant wanting to put some apartment building up there, and so because we changed R two, it's still going to be more than four units where we outright permit four units in R two, so it will be larger than that, which is the necessary R three zoning. And I believe the applicant is here tonight, if you have any specific questions for him.
Thank you, Val. Any questions or comments? Public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now? If not, Planning Commission report, please.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on April second, two thousand twenty-four to consider a zoning change from R two, one and two-family residential district to R three, multiple-family residential district on property addressed as two oh five South Chestnut Street. Planning Commission recommends approval of the request.
to consider ordinance number fifty-eight seventy-six approving the zoning change from R two to R three on property addressed as two oh five South Chestnut Street.
I'll offer for consideration ordinance number fifty-eight seventy-six. Second.
Motion second. Any discussion on this, counsel? Okay. And Val, you said this R two kind of stands out like a sore thumb where it is in the midst of other R three, correct?
Yeah, there's just like this little T-shaped going up a road that is R two, and then it's kind of surrounded by R three around there, so I don't think it'll stick out in the neighborhood.
Okay. All right. Well, we appreciate the initiative on behalf of the property owner and the potential builder to bring new housing units to the community, so thank you. We're on a roll on housing. Let's keep it going. If no further discussion, short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay. Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number fifty-eight seventy-six carries on first reading.
I'll make a motion. We suspend the rules and pass ordinance number fifty-eight seventy-six on second and third.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion second to suspend the rules and approve this item on second, third readings. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number fifty-eight seventy-six carries on second and third.
Okay. On council agenda items thirty and thirty-one, for reasons stated by our city administrator a couple weeks ago at the last city council meeting on another matter related to this property because of the mayor's position, city administrator's position on the board of the nonprofit Greater Norfolk Economic Development Foundation, we will refrain from participating on items thirty and thirty-one. So with that, I would welcome our city council president, Jean Claussen, to take the chair.
Guess I get the big one tonight, huh? Okay. We'd like to open item number thirty, open the public hearing at the request of Greater Norfolk Economic Development Foundation to consider a zoning change from C three, surface central district to C two service or central commercial district on property address one oh five East Norfolk Avenue. This is an open hearing, so we'll open with discussion.
Steve Sanderman, Chair of the Greater Norfolk Economic Development Foundation. You know, to be honest, the last couple of days have been pretty disappointing. There's obviously been a lot of work that's gone on this project, but as many of you have heard, Mark Otto and his development group, M U D, have decided to put this project on hold at one oh five East Norfolk Avenue. On Friday, he sent us a letter just thanking the city staff, the foundation members, the mayor, and their efforts on this project. But in given his rationale, he said, "The toxic environment and necessary hostility toward investment and public-private partnership leading up to this election is not conducive to a positive outcome. We're not going to table union at River Point, even though we have invested a great amount of time and financial resources. Maybe in the future, there can be an environment where this project is seen as a positive. We believe in the project, the city, and the results from the city's effort." You know, when it comes to this process, questions and constructive criticism aren't just welcomed. You know, I would say they're encouraged. And, you know, if you've been at the last several city council meetings, if you've seen input online, that criticism frankly has become hostile to the point of personal attacks. And I would say, for the sake of the future of this community, we cannot afford to gain the reputation of being not open to new business and new development. And so we continue to believe that this property has the potential to be the capstone of our downtown and being able to extend the downtown from the end of First Street to the riverfront to maximize economic growth and attraction for the City of Norfolk. And because of that, the foundation would still like to see a zoning change from C three to C two to match the zoning for the rest of downtown along Norfolk Avenue and make the project, the property, more marketable. The foundation is going to continue to serve its mission of using the resources that we have to incentivize economic development, and so look forward to continue to try and do that on this property, even in light of the recent news from Mark Otto's group. Any questions? Thank you.
Takes me a little longer. Next time, I'll sit in the front row. I'm Jim Bradford, Jr. A lot of my thoughts were similar to Stevens', and there's no point in pounding the, kicking the can down the road, you know? But it is disappointing. I've owned the Bradford Insurance Agency for quite a while, and my dad had it before me, so it'll soon be eighty years that we've been a business on Madison Avenue. And I elected to stay downtown. A few years ago, everybody was building new offices and what have you, and they came to me, and I said, "No, I'm staying downtown, and I'm gonna..." I've been a chamber member for fifty-two years and involved in the various economic development efforts for about fifty years. People, just as a matter of clarification, people often ask, "What is the Greater Norfolk Area Economic Development Foundation? What is it?" It's just simply a group of dedicated volunteers operating under a structure. They have bylaws, so forth. We have zero financial gain in any of these transactions that have taken place over the years. Every once in a while, I hear some snide comment, and that's, you know, "We have freedom of speech in our country, but the law does require it to be accurate, and there's no monies to be made in these deals." And that's really a sore subject among some folks, I know that. The group purchases real estate and held it and later made it available to business prospects. It's that simple. The first one was the Roar plant. Now, none of you probably know who the Roar plant was, but that was, that's now where Cardinal Medical is. It was Sherwood, it was Lionel, but Roar plant was the original deal. Those guys bought the land and gave it to them, and that was their incentive. The next one was Volcraft. And Volcraft built, you know, and eventually they thought, "Hell, we're going to build a new steel mill in town." They went out there, they did the detail center, they, you know, they just keep growing the cold finish. There's about four or five different plants there. Goodyear was next. Those are just things that they were able to do. Because I can't see very well. The group was composed of local business people, bankers, maybe a realtor, a couple city and county officials, large employers such as Volcraft or Norfolk Iron and Metal, places like that, affiliated wholesale grocers, which is formerly affiliated foods, as you guys recognize it. The idea was to facilitate growth. That's what the idea was, facilitate growth. And growth we did achieve. Look at the downtown. Look at the mall being renovated and renewed. People often ask questions about the Bradford Business Park. I didn't ask them the name of it after, maybe that was somebody else's decision. It's a hundred and forty-acre plot out there about Thirty-seventh and Omaha Avenue. Several city economic development folks approached me if they wanted the possibility of having a shovel-ready lots that had roads in, utilities in, ready to roll, just dig the hole and start going. My family, myself and my couple sisters sold that property for about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars under the average of two appraisals. In order to provide kind of a legacy, if you would, to community growth, we carried half the contract, still do, and we've carried it for five years now. It's three-point percent, three-point oh four is the hot rate there. My family's okay, but they got one sister that probably liked to kill me, but the others are fine, so... The growth out there has been slowed down some. We got four or five nice deals out there, but the pandemic and the rising interest rates kind of put people on freeze, you know, and everybody kind of got goofy and sat back. I guess in summary, I would say that the revitalization of our community has been due to the dedicated concerned citizens and, yes, using TIF as an excellent tool. We need all the tools in the toolbox to make things happen. Having lived through several anti-progressive periods, every once in a while, you know, things just kind of get backed up, people get to squabbling, and then things kind of grind to a halt, you know? I've lived through a couple of those, and they weren't any fun, and it's hard to get it going again, you know? It's hard to get the wheels turning and kind of like a train going uphill, you know? It's a slow starter. And I hope we don't let that happen again. We can't. Thank you.
City Council, I'm Kim Davis, and the first thing I want to say is I was very, very upset that I was referred to as toxic because I had the audacity to ask questions about this project. The people that are being labeled as toxic are just wanting to have answers. We're not, we don't want to be seen as not being open to new development. That's not the problem at all. The problem is people want to know why an area that is extremely blighted is currently being used for public business. People want to know why there has to be a thirty-two million dollar project when something similar could be done for a lot less. I don't, I don't like the fact that they labeled us. That seems to happen a lot in this city. I think we should be able to ask questions without being labeled, without being misled. That's all I say. I have.
Just as a reminder, we are five minutes. I let Jim go five-thirty, but we try to keep it fit for five if we can, but thanks.
Good evening, counsel, and I guess the mayor isn't here. Mayor, I'm Al Regi, and I'm here to speak on behalf of requesting an approval for this zoning change that's before you. As many people in Norfolk, I was heartbroken to hear that the developer, the project, had backed out of the development. But as Jim said, I think we need to give the Greater Nor economic development an opportunity to maximize the growth of this property and allow that to happen. I think one of the reasons that the developer, as many of you guys know, the developer backed out of this project was the question that was surrounded about the TIF and the additional money that they were requesting to do this project. The project is sizable. It's thirty-two million dollars. There's not many developers in the City of Norfolk or anywhere around here that I know that are willing to put out thirty-two million dollars with no guaranteed return and guaranteed occupancy. This developer was. A lot of communities are forced to give land, donate land, donate utilities on top of TIF to get developers to come into their community. We were fortunate to have a developer wanting to come in, buy the property, and invest thirty-two million dollars. All I'm asking you is to consider the rezoning. I would encourage the developer to come back to the table, but this time do it a little bit differently. Maybe have a meeting, public meeting with the community, and explain to the community what the project is, how it would help City of Norfolk. I think this will be a crown jewel for the downtown of Norfolk, for the River Point. I have properties on East Norfolk Avenue that have been there for many years. We have tried to maintain those properties and develop those properties to make sure the downtown, which is a gateway to the City of Norfolk, continued to be viable, and this would have been a great project. So I ask your consideration to approving this zoning change. Thank you.
My name is Steve McNally, lifelong Norfolk resident, actually a former Greater Norfolk Board member. I have been instrumental in downtown development ever since I've come back to work at one office. And I do agree with what Jim said. I have a fear that the momentum that we've all worked so hard to get going could be stalled, and it's painfully hard to do that. There's a lot of people that have put that work in to get where we are now. I am speaking in favor of the zoning change. Anything that we can do to help this tract of land be redeveloped is what we should all try to do. I think it's a great thing. I think that one of the things that we lose sight about when we talk about property tax relief, we lose sight of the fact that that can be relieved easily by sales tax revenue, and this thirty-two million dollar project would really make that change. So although you're only talking about the ordinance or the change of the zoning, I certainly hope that maybe some of these public comments get back to the developer and that he would reconsider, that they would reconsider putting that investment into downtown Norfolk. Thank you.
Uh, Mayor, Council, thanks for your time. I'm Gene Walker. I'm store manager down at Hy-Vee East here in downtown Norfolk. I guess there's not a lot I can add to what's already been said. Uh, all I can say is that uh, when I moved here back in 1997, uh, I saw a downtown that was dying. And through the courageous leadership of a lot of people over the last 10 to 12, 15 years, look at what has been created downtown. It has brought new business, new tax revenue, and it's also attracted a lot of people to our community, which we need to do. It's attracted young professionals back to our community. It's keeping young professionals in our community. And I, 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 I know you all know this, but if you're not growing, you're dying, okay? And along with Steve, I would sure hate to see this take a screeching halt. So uh, I am asking for your consideration of this uh zoning change. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Anyone else like to speak?
Jim McKenzie. I, I guess the first thing I'll mention is it's our right and our obligation as citizens to have an opportunity to question what goes on in our community. That, that should just come natural. And if we're putting five or $10 million of public money in a project, we have that right and that obligation to ask those questions. And that doesn't make us toxic or hostile. That just seems we're, we're asking questions. You know, one of the questions that we had was a shortage of parking. It appears that his development probably would have taken 300, required 360 spaces and yet there was maybe 200 spaces. There was a huge shortage. And so we're asking questions. How are you going to address this? And there were no answers. And so to say that's hostile and you know, the developer himself had another project in town that really didn't pan out according to how it was promoted. And so the question is, is this one going to? And if this project was really financially feasible, do you think the developer is going to stop just because some people ask some questions? I don't understand that. The zoning, when you rezone this to C2, you now have no ability to require any kind of parking there for whatever development happens. There's no requirement for a PUD unless there's some, they're going to do something different and then you can specify the PUD, but otherwise you have no ability to control parking. C3, you still do. So consider that. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Tim, excuse me, Tim Ty, I'm on the Greater Norfolk Board. I got on there sometime after this property was bought. But it was my understanding that the reason the foundation purchased the property was to connect the downtown to the riverfront. So that has been the long-term goal and that's the request of the zoning. Greater Norfolk has got an excellent history. Jim forgot about a couple of projects, New Core Detailing Center. We bought the, the old uh Vichy building and got them moved in there temporarily and now Al Colison's group's in there, so. And then Jim doesn't crow loud enough. He recently raised 250,000 for workforce, for a workforce grant match, so. He does constant good in the community and he's, we cringe when he comes because he always wants a check, so. But I think this is a reasonable request. It connects to the downtown. There's been a big investment in that riverfront, private, public, everything. And that will connect it, so. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll be quick. We need another sheet. Hello, my name is Heidi McNally. So I, I love all the comments because I, I agree. I think what's great is that citizens are informed and they're involved and that's a good thing. And so probably what I would suggest is that maybe we have more discussions about this project. I will say that I am here in support of the project. I think it would be fantastic. As someone who actually lives downtown and has been in Norfolk for 35 years, I've seen the downtown when it was not like it is. Um, and now it is a vibrant, amazing place to live, to work, to come uh, watch comedy, um, and to uh just uh walk the streets, uh, which is what I've been doing with my dogs every day and I love that because it's a safe place. I feel very safe walking downtown and I like to see that continue. Um, I think the River Point project is fantastic. I think everything that we can do to continue economic development in Norfolk is a good thing and it will continue to bring um people to this community and it will continue to keep people in this community. I can tell you from um my own experience with my family that lives here, they will say they like Norfolk because of the, the wonderful things that it has to offer them and their family. The wonderful parks, the walking trails, um, just all of the, the water parks, all of those things and they will continue to bring uh people here. There was a comment about parking and I'll just say, uh, you know what? If, if we come into a problem where we have 300, we need 360 parking places, that's a good thing. That means we've got 360 people downtown, so uh, you know, I, I know that's something that needs to be talked about and considered, but I think it would be a good problem to have if we have that much uh traffic in downtown or, or in Norfolk for that matter, so. I hope that the, the council will um go ahead with the zoning request and I hope that we also can work with this developer because I think 32 million infusion in our community would be a fantastic thing for Norfolk. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Council, uh, my name is Brad Brooks. And I am definitely speaking in favor of this zoning change. I've been coming to council meetings for probably close to two years. And we've done an awful lot in this community. There's been a lot of money spent on downtown development. And I, I, I get the impression that there's some people that are trying to hold us back from moving forward. If you don't move forward, there's really only one direction that you can go. And as a community, we need to get together, we need to hash these things out, all these so-called issues. But at the end of the day, this is something that would be real positive for the community. I'm a six, 76-year-old retired individual. But it really gripes me when people can't see any farther than the end of their own personal nose. What we've got to look at going forward is what is Norfolk going to be tomorrow? We've, a number of the individuals that have gotten up here and spoke tonight have talked about, you know, what they've done and a lot of it, there's been little to no personal gain. But we just, we have to look at the future of this city. I've lived here for about 30-some years and I've seen a lot of progress. But I'm really frustrated with some of the stuff that I hear, the excuses that are getting thrown up about why we can't continue to do this. And uh, that's my comment and uh, I'm sticking to it.
My name's David Jansma and all I want to comment on is you folks' job is to represent your citizens. Your citizens were called toxic and hostile. Someone should have explained to this gentleman that we do have the right to have an opinion. We're granted that right as citizens and we're granted the right that it involves us. And I take great offense to those two words. And you folks should too. And you folks should have sat down and explained to him that it's an opinion. Give an answer. Don't respond with toxic, hostile. That's all I wanted to say.
My name is Nicolette Geiger. Um, I actually have two questions about this and I'm not quite sure who to ask them to. The first is that um, since we do have council members who have businesses downtown, what is the parking situation down there already like if we were to lose the parking? And could we still have businesses take over that property without giving them the right for us not to have the parking by changing the zoning? I mean, how big of an issue would it be just to leave the zoning the way it is? So I'm not sure.
Andrew? Question about parking downtown currently?
Yeah, what is it like now?
Depends on time of the day, hours of the day. I walk it almost every single day. I see issues where there's parking from, you know, 11 to 1, same from probably 5 to 7, but past 7 o'clock, it pretty much opens up quite a bit. There's a lot of parking, side streets, all the lots are open. You know, parking right in front of the businesses can be tough, but each one has four or five spaces, so that's going to be tough anytime, so. You know, like Heidi said, having a parking issues, not always a bad thing. People do like to walk two or three blocks. Sometimes they, they chant, they by chance walk into a store or another restaurant, so um, right now, I mean, there's obviously high traffic times, but I didn't see any issue with the, the development at First Street affecting downtown parking currently.
Okay, yeah, I'm not here whether to agree with or disagree with what's going down there, just more, do we need to make this zoning change or could we still leave it the way it is, retain the right for parking and still bring a business in is, is my only question.
Do you want to guys, yeah? Alright?
So back again, um, that other subject was much more fun than this one has been. I want to echo the sentiments of some of my other fellow Greater Norfolk Economic Development Foundation members. You know, we long, I won't reiterate some of the stuff that was said, but one of the things I will say is that, and I've been coming back to these meetings. About a month and a half ago, I stood up here and I apologized to some of you as it related to TIF. And I said, I apologize that some of you've got hung out to dry on this TIF thing because it was very, very clear to me that there was a lot of misinformation in the community, a lot of misunderstanding. That's been two months ago-ish. Since that time, I've been coming to, to most of these meetings just because we've had, on the foundation, we had some involvement in this project and I've been watching others' projects and just kind of casually curious where this TIF thing was going to go and where economic development was going to go and, and the thing that, that has really stuck out with me and I really was pressed and frankly disappointed and sad really in a way. At really where, where our community has come in the last eight, nine months, two years, in the terms of, of the word toxicity, you know, and I don't know if that's the right term or not, I feel bad that there was a few individuals, uh, Mr. Jansma, Kim?
Thank you for what you said. That was great.
I love, I love those kind of comments in terms of, hey, we have the right to, to get up here and talk. And I think our city government is so much better when people do stand up and say things. But let's be clear. Where toxicity comes from is not what we ask. It's how we ask it. And where toxicity comes in is when we hide behind questions and accuse our neighbors and friends of engaging in some illegal act. That's toxicity. Toxicity is when we look at a developer and say, I don't think you know what you're talking about. And you're publicly embarrassing while you're standing here. That's toxicity. Not questions of why you should do this, how it should happen. We should be asking those questions 50,000 times over until we get the answer. But economic development doesn't work that way. Developers go where developers feel welcome, okay? There's a lot of people, a lot of communities that are doing the exact same things. Norfolk is an amazing place. Part of the reason we, my, brought my family back here is because this is the greatest community in the United States. But there's a lot of other communities that claim the same. I mean, in the state of Nebraska right now, there are 1,237 TIF projects, if I can find my notes, that have been done in, no, excuse me, 1,236 TIF, TIF projects that have done, that have been completed since TIF was allowed. Norfolk has done 2.6% of those TIF projects. Wow, we're really abusing TIF. The terrible people we are, really have abused TIF. Well, all these other communities, there's 68 counties and 138 communities just in the state of Nebraska competing for developers' business. That's why toxicity mattered. And not everybody was toxic. I, I've heard a lot of great comments while here. People standing up, disagreeing, we should do that. We should be in a position to disagree. But when we, when we conflate those disagreements and begin to start slewing accusations, when you, when you look at a volunteer board, there's a reason that we stood up here tonight and felt like we needed to share. Why do we need to share? Because people make accusations that somehow we were involved in some illicit underground, underhanded activity. That's toxic. That's toxic. I'm gonna, we need to do this project? This project needs to happen for this community? Keep asking questions. I, I hope we have 90 people there at the next meeting, I'm sorry for you guys, that ask good questions. Explain this to me. Why do we need to do this? Talk to me about the parking. But don't stand up in here and say, hey, talk to me about the parking because I think you're trying to engage in some illegal activity. Or I think you're hooking with somebody else or whatever you're doing. That's toxic. We don't need to be that way. They do that in Chicago. They do that in New York and Washington DC. Don't soil this community with that Chicago-style politics. That goes for you guys and everybody else that comes up here. We don't need that in this community. Just ask questions. I ask questions all the time and I get answers. And I think the reason I get an answer is because I don't call Shane up and say, hey Shane, you bum, I think you're cheating again and I think you screwed me over. I ask Shane, can you explain this to me? It's okay to ask questions, but I understand- It's okay to ask questions, but understand that words matter, and when you say things, developers get scared. How could you not? They're not even from this community, and you start saying things like that, the first thing, first, first thing, excuse me, that they start to be concerned with is maybe that town doesn't want me there. Okay? So I'm in favor of this. I think we need to vote for it. Thank you.
One quick question for you. Nicolette had asked a question, she was talking about answering questions, and we didn't get an answer to her yet, and that was the question about C2 to C3 and the need for the developer to do that. Is that my kind of stating it back right? Okay. Would you, as a board member, and would you be able to kind of answer that, why you guys have brought this up?
Yeah, and I think for us, it, one of the things with them leaving, we still have, we still have, and I think we spoke into this, we still have a building there and a property that needs to be developed. I mean, we didn't buy it to hold it. We bought it to develop it. We believe that that designation allows, gives us more flexibility in going to developers to recruit them, to develop that. So having it look more like the downtown, we believe makes it more flexible. I don't know what they're gonna need for parking. I mean, let's let them come here and tell us that. I mean, one of the things I know about parking, because I have a parking issue myself in the building we're in, is you find a way to make it work, but the other thing I know is as a developer, if you develop something that has inadequate parking, that's an economic problem for you. So, and you know, and I know some of us like to think we're smarter than the developers out there, but usually those developers have a pretty good idea of what they need for parking and recognize that if they don't have adequate parking, in many cases, their, their projects don't work. I mean, I can't do a thirty-unit apartment complex and have six parking spots. Even if, even if I could, and you wouldn't let me do that, but those kind of things matter, and it matters to developers. So at some level, you gotta, we also have to work with some of these developers and recognize that some of these people do have some expertise that we may not have. So I don't know if that answered your question.
Thanks. Thanks, Kim.
On that same topic, Val, C2 to C3, is that the real difference, is just conditional use and lot requirements? Is that the biggest difference between the two?
C2 is pretty much only downtown, because older downtown, you have attached buildings, you know, lot lines, so, and you go lot line to lot line, front, back, side to side. There is no really land on the small lots of downtown to even put parking, and so that's why that is in place. And you can go taller. You can have automatic mixed use of retail on the first floor with residential above. C3, that is a lot of what, it's our heavy commercial, essentially. So you can go anywhere from an insurance office to a Menards in, in C3. And there are parking, standard parking requirements for there, and you cannot have residential in C3. So those are kind of the, the main points of difference, I would say.
So the developer could have enough parking if they planned for the development to have enough parking?
In C3.
Right, or, well, in C2 as well. If the developer planned to have parking, they could have enough parking, correct? I mean, I guess is it, my, my question is, there's no regulations on parking, right? It's just what the developer decides to do?
In C2, correct. There are no required parking in C2 like there would be C3. So if you are C3, building a Menards, we're gonna tell you based on square footage how many minimum parking spaces you need. If you can fit a Menards in C2, then you could potentially fill up the whole place with just the building and then figure the parking elsewhere. So there's, there's no actual requirement unless they choose to put it on. Yeah.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm Jan Haberman, 204 East Philip. I live in the area. The only person I've heard here say they actually live in this area. I know that, I don't go out of, like, I go to the Y every day. I, I avoid going between seven and eight, because that's when all the traffic, the people are going to work, kids are going to school. The, it backs up on that main thoroughfare of First and Norfolk Avenue. It backs up. The light, you sit two, three times through the lights. That's, you know. So already, we have issues with traffic on that corner. You want to add that big, and, and I, I just, the, the, I, let me comment. I, the one thing that's happening tonight that I really am appreciating is transparency. We as citizens are asking questions, and I'm getting some answers, and some things explained. So, and when I came here, what was C2 and C3? I didn't know. And, and so when I hear it's no requirement on parking spaces, and I hear how many group, all the, all the apartments in those buildings and businesses on the bottom layers, and there's no requirement for parking, I see a problem. Where's the, where are the people gonna park? And if businesses don't have parking beside, there, in that corner, it's an isolated corner. You park across the street, you are crossing a major thoroughfare in our city. You're not just gonna go, you don't want to be, have people jaywalking, but because they're gonna park in the Hy-Vee lot, they're gonna park in the city lots, on the other side, they're gonna park in the park. There's, there's just a very limited amount of space there, and that's a big development. So I would, and, and I wouldn't, you know, the, the idea, I'm not against what you're trying to put in there, but it's, I just see the problem. We need, we need to look at this. What, why are we seeming to just rush through this and, and not address the issues? Because that will be an issue, and as a resident of that area, I live two blocks away from Hy-Vee and, and Alco. I've lived there for a long time. I used to go to Alco all the time, and I, a lot of time, I'd get in my car and drive there rather than walk, because I gotta cross those areas. When Hy-Vee was over there, my kids were working there. They drove their car there. Because trying to walk and cross major streets, it wasn't safe. I didn't want them walking, even when they were teenagers and worked there. So it is something that needs to be considered. And as city council, don't rush through it. Talk about it, and it, open it up to citizens, get more, where's the, what are with the rest of the neighbors? And I'm kind of...
Mr. Hy, from Hy-Vee?
I'm, it's like, people are gonna be parking in your lot. There's no question about that, in my books. That's why, I mean, that's just personally, because I, I live there. And if you're trying to put all that, all that building in that spot, personally, I think it's over, you're over, you're, you're putting too much in that small spot. And, and it's, it looks nice, it's got, it's got a great idea, but maybe we need to, just need some more thought. And why try to push it, rush it through? And that's, I think, why you're getting some comments of, of people ask, what about this, what about that? And a lot of times, and I've also been going to a lot of city council meetings. I've sat here, asking questions, or other, listening to other people, there's no answer. City council votes that day on it, rather than tableing it and say, let's get some more discussion on this. We need transparency. And just because it's on the agenda doesn't mean you have to vote on it tonight. You can table it. And this is one, I was thankful that Mark Otto said, we're gonna, we're gonna postpone this, we're gonna, because it needs more thought to it. We can't just shove something too much in that place, at least it has to be looked at, especially if there's not parking. And, and it's gonna add a, a ton of congestion to that, that intersection. It's, it's gonna, you know, it, it's not a good fit right now. It needs some more discussion. So table it, talk about it, get more citizen input in it, so that we, that you know what the rest of us... See, I, and I, I've been listening to these people. How many, like I said, I think I'm the only person who lives fairly close. Even if you live downtown Norfolk, you're not getting, you're not feeling the traffic at that jet, at that intersection. Where, where if I want to go through any place in town, I have to go there, through that intersection. So need, keep the transparency coming, and, and keep listening to the citizens. And think about everybody, okay? And now I'll sign.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Terry Rasmussen. I work out at Nucor and I'm a member of Seven County Spirits LLC. But I'm speaking for myself. I don't speak for Nucor. Personally, I, I support this. I think this is, if we can help a developer come in and invest that kind of money into our city, that's good for us. For, for me, I look at this project, you know, we did, as a city, we did all this work down by Johnson Park and still doing this work. And to me, the, the big part of that was to, one, give our communities a, a place to go enjoy on the east side of town. And another is to build, build a better community, a community that people from outside want to come in, want to invest, want to live. And as, while I was working at Nucor, one of the problems that I had was bringing in experienced people that, that could add to, engineers is who I was recruiting. And when they come into Norfolk and they say, what's here for my family? That was a, a big push for doing all this, all this work. How do we make the city better? How do we get people to come here and say, I know what's here for my family? I want to be part of this community, and I, I want to work in this community. And so if we can make it easier for a developer to come in and invest and make our community more valuable and bring more people to it, I think that's good for all of us.
Anyone else? I guess seeing no further discussion, can you give me a planning and zoning report?
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on April 2nd, 2024 to consider a zoning change from C3 to C2 on property addressed as 105 East Norfolk Avenue. Planning Commission recommends approval of the request with an eight to zero vote.
Thank you. So that will close the hearing, the public hearing, and we'll move on to item number thirty-one, consideration of ordinance number 5877, approving a zoning change from C3 Service Commercial District to C2 Central Commissioner District on property address located at 105 East Norfolk Avenue. Any motion?
I'll have it for consideration, ordinance 5877.
Second.
Okay, with motion, a second discussion, please.
I guess I'll just make one comment. This is about our process. Val, can you touch lightly on just the process, where we get to from when we start with somebody coming in for a project till the time that we initially vote on the permanent part of the project? We have checks and balances with public hearings all the way across the board, right?
Correct. Depending on what all processes we're going through, I mean, this one had a, all the things that went with the extreme blight, the zone change we're hearing tonight, the preliminary PD that got pulled. So there were multiple processes on Planning Commission and City Council. Some were public hearings, some were not, but they were all out in the public and able to be discussed. Start to finish depends on the project. Something this size, a lot of times, will come in for what we call pre-planning, where a, a project will get explained to the staff that kind of works a project from start to finish, zoning, streets, permitting, that sort of thing. And just kind of at that point says, here's what we want to do. How, how can you get there? You know, what processes do you need to go through to ask the question to you all and the public as to whether you want to approve that or not? So that's how we kind of work through a process with people.
So tonight, we're just, the zoning change, that's all we're doing?
Correct.
There's still more steps involved beyond this?
If a project were to come through similar to this, then they might need a, a plaid or a PD. There's no guarantee for that. If, if the zone change does go through, or even if it does not, and somebody brings in something that either fits the C2 or the C3 and outright permits it, then really nothing needs to come through here, and you can just go and get your building permit at that point in time if it's approved, if, if it's permitted outright by the zoning code to do what they want to do. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
I would just have a question for somebody on the board, I don't, whoever wants to come up. Just a quick question about the seed, about the, the possibility of a business bloating at that property and keeping it in C3, or do you, you know, or, because you've had some, you've had some interest over the years.
Sure.
But primarily, in terms of getting, are they gonna all, are they pretty much a hundred percent going fast for C2 zoning on this?
Yeah, so in terms of the vision that the foundation has had, Shane, since we bought that property, is we would, we want it to be an extension of the downtown. And the only way to truly have that is to have the density of downtown, and that's through C2. And so, yeah, as we look going forward, if it doesn't work out with Mark Otto and his development group, and we try to, to get another owner to come in, developer to come in, we're gonna only entertain ones that are looking to do that, that vision. And that would also have a, require a plan development to have the, the vision that we want to see that, that property. So, and instead, you asked too about, is there gonna be other steps here? We've made it very clear, you know, for the level of quality of a project we want, you know, it, it's gonna require TIF. Because if it's, if it does require TIF, well, then it's gonna be a Dollar General supercenter, right? And we, we don't want that. We want a project that actually is gonna look good in fifty years, not just the next ten. So.
Do you think this will help your, your possibilities of moving the property?
I, I think it will make the property more marketable, which is why we decided as a foundation to move forward and still do this zoning change tonight, even though we're not gonna move forward with the rest of the development as, as the developers pull out.
And with, with the history of the project or this land, would you say you've had quite a bit of interest or not that much? I mean, is, is it few and far between?
Honestly, Shane, it's a challenge. We, we like to think Norfolk's a great community, and it is. But if you're gonna try and do a twenty, twenty-five, thirty million plus dollar development in a downtown area, Norfolk's not at the top of your list, right? And so we gotta really sell the community on why this is a great opportunity, and that's been difficult. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's all I've got, unless somebody else has got some questions.
Steve, real quick, is there any businesses that are in there currently that would benefit? Or would it hurt them or help them to have a C2? Does it, does it affect business today at all?
Currently, it doesn't affect our current businesses, just because there's plenty of parking there. Like, parking's not a, not an issue. You know, less than a quarter of that parking lot's used currently. And so it would be more for marketing going forward and, and being attracted to a, a future developer. Okay, thank you.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I have just a comment, maybe even a question for, for Val. But that's C2, and it's adjacent C2 next to it, right? Just across the street to the west, that's all C2?
Yeah, across the street, First Street is C2, all the way down to probably Seventh Street, I believe, is C2.
And then this also does conform to the comprehensive plan in that area?
The comp plan calls for commercial, so, I mean...
Whether it's two or three?
Right. It, we don't designate in... Right. We don't designate in the comp plan.
Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Val, could the developer circumvent the council in any way? So say the foundation finds a developer, give them the C2 designation, zoning. Could they possibly put a development there without talking to council or having a conversation about that development?
That's kind of what I was saying. Whether it's C2 or C3, as long as it's an outright permitted use in either of those districts, then yes, you could, if you have one building on one lot and it conforms to the zoning, it doesn't matter what zoning you're in at that point in time. You can go and get a building permit.
Anyone else? All right.
I don't know, I would just, I just want to speak to it. I just feel that... I'm not sure why the push for C2. I know we want the property to look attractive. We want developers to look at this. But I don't think C2's controversial. I don't think it's a controversial topic. But I think what it could do is if we do give the C2 designation, then it might be one less conversation we have with the developer because we won't really have a say or have input or have a public conversation in the development if we give them the C2 designation tonight because they already have it. So my only concern is the lack of conversation we'll have if we do this. The developer will have the zoning change. The only conversation will be then for TIF. So that's my only reservation in it, is not having a conversation about future development and them having the zoning already in place. So...
Any other discussion? Okay, may I short title?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
I'm going to move over here to vote, so you can vote, right? Roll call.
Voting in the affirmative, McCarthy, Grandquist, Arns, Hillibrand, Clausen, Muirin. Voting in opposition, Webb. Ordinance number 5877 carries on first reading.
Okay, that takes us to item number 33 on the agenda. Would look for a motion to consider approval of change order number six with United Contractors Incorporated for the First Street Bridge and Instream Improvements Project resulting in a net decrease of $75,904.01.
I'll make a motion to approve change order number six. Second.
Motion second. And for some background on this, Steve Ramis, our Public Works Director. Steve?
Mayor and Council, I'm presenting this tonight. What you have before you here is a progress change order on First Street. The major additions, there's a list of additions and deletions here. The major additions are related to a CenturyLink line that was located during the construction process. It caused some delays back there when we were working on the Norfolk Avenue and First Street intersection. We had brought the delay to council, presented the delay, informed them that there would be about a $55,000 to $60,000 cost associated with that CenturyLink line and the additional work that was going to be required. So that is what this change order is. You see that work there. In addition to that, there's about $139,000 deduct on four-foot grounded boulders for a couple of different structures in there. So the net change here is $75,904.01 decrease in the contract with United Constructors.
Thanks, Steve. Any questions on that? Any public comment or input?
Why don't you always bring change orders in front of us that are net decrease?
Well, most of mine have been lately. I try.
Appreciate it.
All right, anything else? If not, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item 34, would look for a motion to consider approval of ordinance number 5878, amending section 2-151 of the city code to eliminate language creating the position of public safety director.
I will offer for consideration approval of ordinance number 5878, amending section 2-151.
Second.
Motion in second. For some background on this, our city attorney, Danny Myers-Noye. Dan?
Thank you. This is simply a cleanup ordinance. Code section 2-151 creates the position of public safety director, which includes direct control and supervision of the police chief, fire, and risk manager. Since the city no longer has a public safety director, this ordinance simply removes the references.
Okay, any questions on this or discussion?
So are we essentially removing the position or just dropping the name?
This ordinance removes the position.
Removes the position. Okay, thank you.
Questions or comments? Public input? Hearing none. Short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend section 2-151 of the official city code to eliminate language creating the position of public safety director to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5878 carries on first reading.
Second.
Motion second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. No further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5878 carries on second and third.
Item 35, would look for a motion to consider approval of ordinance number 5879, amending chapter 2, article 5, and section 18-53 of the city code to remove references to risk manager and replace them with operations manager.
I'll offer consideration of approval ordinance number 5879.
Second.
Motion second. And again, Danny, some background on this, please.
Yes, thank you. This is another cleanup ordinance. The city currently has a position entitled operations manager as opposed to the former risk manager. This ordinance changes references in the code to the current title simply because there are so many references within. We want to keep it clean and so that citizens can understand it when they're going to look through our city code.
Thank you, Danny. Any questions?
We're still keeping Lyle, though, right?
That's debatable. Yes, I think so.
Either questions or commentary? Any public input?
Lyle, are you happy with the name change? All right. All right.
Any public discussion on this? Hearing none. Short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend chapter 2, article 5 of the official city code and to amend section 18-53 of the official city code to remove references to risk manager contained therein and replace them with operations manager to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5879 carries on first reading.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading.
Second.
Motion second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5879 carries on second and third.
Item 36, would look for a motion to consider approval of ordinance number 5880, amending section 2-5 of the official city code to update ambulance mileage fees.
I'll make a motion for consideration resolution.
Second.
Oh, sorry. That's ordinance 5880, isn't it? Yeah, for ordinance 5880.
I'll second that, too.
Motion in second. For some background on this, Chief Tim Rogge of our Norfolk Fire Division, chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This topic came up. We're in the process of onboarding with our third-party EMS billing company that was approved here a few months back. And the question was asked as part of that process, how we wanted to handle mileage. Our ordinance has historically been outside city limits. We had three steps within our ordinance, 1 to 17 miles, 18 to 50 miles, and then 50-plus miles. And that stair stepped basically $18 a mile, 16, and then 14, depending upon how far away. As far back as I can remember, I can't think of anywhere we were 50-plus miles and very few, if any, that we were 18 to 50 miles. So we reached out to some municipalities across the state and the nine different 911 services that responded to me did in fact bill both inside and outside city limits. In addition to that, they had set rates. They didn't have any stair stepping of any sort. So kind of found out we were, I guess, in the minority of agencies that were not billing for mileage inside city limits. So that is something that we would like to add. It will create some revenues. Those revenues will ultimately help offset some of the costs that we're going to be paying to this EMS billing company. And we feel like it's a good move at this time. So I'd entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you, chief. Any questions?
I know insurance-wise, it's not an issue for reimbursing on mileage fees. Do you think health insurance coverage would affect your additional mileage?
You want to comment on that, Brianna?
More than likely. I mean, probably 85% of patients that we transport are Medicare and/or Medicaid. And so they have certain amounts that they'll pay, that they'll allow. The insurance, private insurance companies are a little bit all over the place, but I've seen ones that we have billed that have been out of, outside of city limits have reimbursed. There's usually a little bit of a patient responsibility if copays haven't been met and those things, but they typically do reimburse as well.
And I should add that we'd be looking at 18 would be our flat rate, and that puts us right in line with what other municipalities are charging for inside/outside city limit mileage.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, chief. And thank you to fire staff and Brianna for your work in helping modernize these ambulance processes. Any public input on this? Hearing none, then short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend section 2-5 of the official city code to update ambulance mileage fees to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5880 carries on first reading.
Seeing the opposition, I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules and pass on second and third.
Second.
Motion second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5880 carries on second and third.
Item 37, would entertain a motion to consider resolution number 2024-19 to place stop signs controlling traffic in all four directions at the intersection of Sunrise Drive and Reef Street.
I'll offer consideration of resolution 2024-19.
Second. Motion second. For some background on this, Steve Ramis, please, our Public Works Director.
Mayor and Council, this is an item that came up a couple meetings ago and there was a conversation about reducing or restricting stopping on the north side of Sunrise through the Legacy Bend Development. As a function of that conversation, several residents in the area expressed concern about speed. So that, the motion relative to the removing of, or not allowing traffic to park on the north side was tabled. And subsequent to that, then, there was a meeting that I had with the developers as well. The developers met with the residents in the area on April 2nd to gather more information from them relative to their concerns within the development. Another one of the conversations related to that was a second connection or potentially even three connections in and out of that subdivision. What's before us here today, then, is a function of those meetings and conversations around how to control the speeds through the subdivision. At the public, or at the meeting that the developer held with the residents, the residents were requesting stop signs at both Reef and Sunrise, and I believe it's David Street and Sunrise. Visiting with the police department and engineering staff and others. We feel that starting with the four-way stops at Reef and Sunrise Drive would be an appropriate way to start and monitor how that traffic responds to that. In addition to this, we've had conversation with the developer whose engineer is here tonight, too, to speak about speed tables in that subdivision, or specifically on Sunrise Drive. And there is a desire to experiment with some speed tables and possibly they would be temporary type speed tables and then convert those to permanent speed tables if they seem to make a difference. So what's here, then, again, is it's very easy for us to do, install the four-way stop signs there at Sunrise Drive and Reef Street and then be able to have that in the ground within a few days following this evening's meeting. So with that, I would open it up for any questions that you might have from me. And as well, I could bring up the developer's engineer, Matt Reef, as well.
I believe the conversation that may have taken place was with Chief Miller and the citizens that did attend the meeting on April 2nd and with recommendation of just having one intersection at Sunrise and Reef instead of, instead of both of them a block apart. Some of the reason that Chief Miller gave, I believe, the citizen, or the people that live along Sunrise were okay with that, is that correct? With doing one intersection instead of putting stop signs at both?
I cannot answer that. I'm not aware as to whether or not Chief Miller followed up with those citizens. I think Councilman Grandquist, you were also involved, I think, in some of those conversations. Was there follow-up?
Yeah, I can somewhat answer that, I guess. Shane and I were at that meeting with the residents and the developer. There was many a discussion about traffic, stop signs, stop signs at both those intersections, putting in the streets, north on McIntosh, east on Maple. Further development, obviously. It was a whole gamut of discussion. When, just to give you a little background, when we left that conversation, there was discussion. I think we concluded on both intersections along Sunrise to be four-way stops and hopeful that a resolution could be, come about on McIntosh going north on that street sooner than later, obviously. And obvious, a bunch of development would really slow down and hinder traffic anyway. The more dense it is, the slower the traffic would be. But right now, it's kind of wide open. From that, there was some concern with, so they put up a, I don't know, a black box. I don't know what else to call it. That's what Miller called it at the time, but to monitor traffic. And it was going fairly fast. I think initially he told me about 32 mile an hour, and I think it concluded around 28 or 27. Does that sound right? So from there, he felt that a four-way stop right next to the houses and vehicles taking off from that four-way stop might cause another issue of loud noises and thought it'd be best to have that one intersection with a four-way stop to help slow it down. to have that one intersection with a four-way stop to help slow down traffic as a starter. And if there needed to be more, then we'd go from there. He did reach out from, from an email that I saw from him, he did reach out to the residents. And some had no comment, I guess, one way or another, and it sounded like most were fine, was starting with one intersection being that way. So for now, I think that's understandable, but I think as a city, we need to help in any way possible to continue development there and especially the streets, because I think that's the biggest problem. I think the study was six thousand some odd vehicles going through there, and that's a heck of a lot of vehicles through one very small street. So there needs to be something else there. But this is a start, and I think we need to keep our eyes on it, and if we need more, we need to do more.
And so, just to answer a little bit of question there that's kind of posed, is we are, we have engaged with the developer to put together a paving district that we would, that we would implement here, probably at the first meeting in May, or at least bring to, bring to council for your consideration. That would start the street, the street connection to McIntosh is what we're looking at starting there. And again, yes, Captain Miller did visit with me. One of the reasons he really suggested we start with the one intersection was the noise that's created by vehicles starting and stopping and felt that, starting with one intersection, and if that doesn't provide the solution necessary, that we could talk about another intersection.
I'd add to that, one more thing about the, what'd you call those, the speed tables, I think is what you said? There was discussion about having those temporary or permanent and the snow removal and how that works with the gravity blades and very possible that, not very well, obviously, going around those or over those. So I think that's a, like I said, if you get more development, you're not, probably not going to have to worry about it much, but that'd be a last resort.
The way I understood it, most of us were in favor of stop signs right now and not, speed bumps weren't, those are another thought, but to start with a stop sign and move from there.
Yeah, sounds like it.
Right.
All right, hear their discussion. Public input this time on this? None. All right, if no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution twenty-two-four dash nineteen is adopted.
All right, last but not least, item thirty-eight under administrative reports. A presentation of the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, along with the related auditor's letter. And for this, we'll hear from Randy Gates, our city finance officer. Randy?
I'm pleased to report that the city continues to have a good financial position and our economy continues to be strong. For instance, sales tax increased for the fiscal year ended September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, by almost three-quarters of a million dollars, or six point eight percent. This is on top of a six point one percent increase in the prior fiscal year. Our assessed valuation continues to increase with the most recent assessed valuation numbers for two thousand twenty-three showing an eight point three percent increase. For two thousand twenty-two, the year covered by these financial statements, assessed value increased almost fifteen percent, more than half of this being attributable to growth, which was spurred by the large annexation. I will focus my review of the city's financial statements on the citywide financial statements. These are full accrual financial statements prepared on a basis of accounting similar to what private businesses prepare their financial statements. We also have financial statements on several other bases of accounting in this annual comprehensive financial report. The governmental funds are on the modified accrual basis, which focuses on available, spendable financial resources. This is a more short-term focus, whereas the citywide financial statements have a long-term focus. And finally, state law requires us to prepare our budget on a cash basis, so the budgetary comparison statements in the act are on a cash basis. So that can get somewhat confusing, having three different bases of accounting, but that's the way governmental accounting is. As I stated, I'll start with the citywide statements and the statement of activities, which is on page one ninety-five of the agenda packets. This would be equivalent to the business's income statement. At the top of this statement is a listing of various city programs, with the first being the governmental activities. These are the traditional services people think of when they think of city government, police, fires, streets, parks, that type of thing. The left-most column of numbers for these are the expenses of those programs, and then following that are three columns for program revenues broken down into charges for services, uppering grants and contributions, and capital grants and contributions. As would be expected, the net cost of the shown in the fourth column over is negative. You don't expect police to earn a profit or the library to earn profit. These costs are covered by general revenues, primarily taxes, which are listed in the bottom half of this statement. Following this are the city's business-type activities. These are the city's utilities and utility-type activities. There's four of these. We have water, sewer, solid waste, and stormwater. As you would expect, these activities, which are supposed to have rates set to cover their expenditures, all show positive net revenue. The, all of these funds had increases in rates on November of two thousand twenty-one, or two point two, excuse me. The water and sewer funds increased their rates by three and a half percent. Solid waste, thirteen point seven percent. This was to help pay for the implementation, the solid waste master plan, and the related improvements. And stormwater rates increased by a dollar per month for residential and three dollars per month for commercial and industrial customers. The bottom half of this financial statement is the general revenues used to pay for the net cost of the governmental-type activities above. The largest of these general revenues is sales tax, which is about double the next largest source, which is property tax. As I mentioned earlier, this had a six point eight percent increase in revenues. Property tax increased about seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, or twelve percent. This is less than the fifteen percent increase in assessed value because of, say, you lowered its tax rate three-tenths of a cent. The third largest general revenue is NPPD lease revenue. That stayed almost the same, at about four point seven million dollars from year over year. Occupation and franchise taxes decreased substantially because of the recreation facility bonds originally issued in two thousand ten being paid off. These paid off early. They weren't scheduled to pay off until ten years after issuance of two thousand thirty. Since these is paid off early, we no longer needed this occupation tax, and that levy decreased in November of twenty-one, while it was eliminated in November of twenty-one. General and our governmental revenues decreased nine hundred and nineteen thousand, primarily due to ARPA funds. The revenue from grants is recognized when the expenditures are incurred. So even though we got the four point three million of ARPA revenues in our hands, until we spend that, we do not recognize the revenue on the full accrual basis. There was one point two million of ARPA expenditures in the prior fiscal year compared to two hundred and fifty-nine thousand this year. Interest income increases substantially, going from four hundred and thirty-four thousand last year, over two million dollars this year, due to increases in interest rate. The net result of this is an increase in the city's net position of over eleven point two million dollars. This is similar to a net income for a business, and in general, an increase in net position indicates financial health. The city's net position at the end of the year is one hundred and ninety-three million, compared to one hundred and eighty-one million at the beginning of the year. You can see what makes up the net position of the city by looking at the statement of net position preceding page or page one ninety-four of the agenda packets. This is the city's balance sheet. Most of the numbers in this balance sheet are somewhere to last year, but there are some bigger changes. Cash, for instance, went down about five million dollars. This was because we had proceeds of bond issues from the prior fiscal year that weren't spent at the beginning of this fiscal year, biggest of these being the twenty million, two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar check bond issue. This was being spent during the fiscal year, drawing down cash. And as this cash was drawn down, this went into the city's capital assets. Most of these are still listed in construction in progress, which is part of the capital assets not being depreciated, and why that went up ten million dollars, going from thirty-three million to forty-three million dollars. Speaking of bonds, the city's net increase in debt in the fiscal year ended two thousand twenty-three was five hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in bonded debt. This was due to one million, nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar special assessment bond, which we paid off primarily with special assessment revenues. This was partially offset by principal payments on the city's existing debt. This bond issue received a favorable rating from Moody's of double-A three, which is quite good for a city our size. The city's financial statements are audited by four of us. They're a large national accounting firm. They changed their name from B K D a couple years ago, so most of you may think of them as B K D. The, there's various audit reports prepared by four of us in these financial statements. There's kind of a summary of them on page, there's two ninety-five and two ninety-six. That's the schedule of findings and question cost, which in our case, there were no unfavorable audit findings or question cost. The city's financial statements received a modified audit opinion, which means that it was prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. All these audit reports are clean audit reports. There was no internal control deficiencies, there are no instances of noncompliance with federal laws and regulations, there are no audit findings requiring disclosure. So instead of coming through here to try and find all these audit reports, that's a pretty good summary of them there. I'd answer any questions.
Where do we start? Thank you, Randy. This is, you know, certainly one of the highlights of my year, the financial report. It's, it's very comprehensive, as we can all see, and we're very grateful to our financial staff, which does great work year in and year out to make sure that all our expenditures are reported properly and that we keep a healthy budget. Randy, I guess the, one of the key numbers, there's a lot to take away from this, but restate just for the right, the net position, the community's start, starting place at the beginning of the year and where we ended up?
Yeah, that increased eleven point two million dollars.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this from the council?
I don't, just a comment, I think, but isn't this auditing firm a different one than we use? I mean, we've used them for what, the last two or three years? Somebody different?
This is the second year.
Second year for them, so. And I think, just to, I guess, maybe I'd say it on the record, but the previous auditor and this auditor, I think, was there a couple differences last year that they found? Maybe I'm wrong, but no matter what the auditors were when we, when we were audited, I think we had a very good credit rating with the previous one and this, this one here, so.
Yeah, I think for a city our size, having a double-A credit rating is, is something to be happy with.
Yeah, so.
What, what was that?
Randy can't retire, is what he said.
Yeah, yeah, and as Andy has pointed out, I think this is also kind of a year-in, year-out thing. Oh, this one, this distinction was a little bit different this year, above and beyond. The certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting was presented to the city of Norfolk and the city fiscal staff. And that's, they don't hand those out like candy, I don't think, do they, Randy? Those distinctions, so. That's, you know, for, for all the, all the discussions that we sometime here, sometimes here, and we heard him alluded to tonight, we have a fiscal staff and a board of elected officials that do a lot of work to present a fiscally responsible, forward-thinking, safe and secure budget every year. So we appreciate the work that goes into that. Anything else, council?
I would just kind of like to add to that. I think Randy and Sheila, I think, just do a fantastic job, year in and year out. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, this meeting in the Norfolk City Council is concluded, and we are adjourned.